Fifth pledge of allegiance and we'll go into our roll call.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the zealous symbol of perfect friendship among the united cultures.
Thank you everyone for being here today. We appreciate, appreciate your attendance. We'll get into things in a second. Joan, can you do a roll call for us please?
Chris Mortensen.
Here.
Charles Long.
Here.
Michael Schoff.
Here.
Priscilla Benali.
Kevin Mitchell.
Here.
Alright, we have, we have a quorum so we'll go ahead and, and begin. Priscilla, you had something for us that you were mentioning?
Yes, sir. Um, sir, I would like to ask the board and our attendants here and people online if we could do a moment of silence for the passing of two of our teachers and a student, sir?
Yes, yes ma'am. Let's do that right now. Thank you, thank you. Thank you for reminding me about that too. It's always tragic when, uh, loss of life is tragic anytime. And, uh, it's important for us to, to, um, remember that and, and keep those folks in our hearts and our minds. Um, the next step here on the agenda is to approve today's agenda.
I'll go ahead and move, sir.
Okay.
Second.
Second by Mr. Schoff. Roll call please.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Benali?
Yes.
Mr. Schoff?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes. Um, next part is recognition and for that I'll turn the time over to Mr. Hyatt.
There is none.
None today? Okay. That makes it easy. Uh, next item is number three, approval of the meetings from our last regular meeting on July 22nd. Are there any questions or amendments or, or any, anything about the minutes or can we move right into a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Okay. Second from anybody down there?
Second.
Second from, and, roll call please.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Benali?
Oh.
Mr. Schoff?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes. Alright, consent agenda, items four, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, H, I, J, and K. Are there any questions?
Not a question, sir, but I would like to say thank you, um, in advance. I know we haven't approved it yet, but thank you in advance to our board and also to, um, Mr. Hyatt and administration for approving our two Ethel Edison Elson and Catherine Begay. They are National Johnson O'Malley Teacher of the Year, um, awardees and will be recognizing them in September. So, thank you, I can have it for that.
It's exciting. Alright, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve consent agenda items four, A through K.
Okay, second down there?
Second.
Alright, by Mr. Mitchell. Roll call please.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Benali?
Yes.
Mr. Schoff?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes. Next item, study circle. Do we have any public comment today?
No.
No.
No public comment today? Alright, and so, our next item is the superintendent report and for that I'll turn the time over to Mr. Hyatt.
President Mortensen, members of the board, um, few items. Obviously, we've got a strong start to the school year, uh, with respect to our education, getting students back into school. I just want to express my appreciation to the staff of the school district. Uh, they've done an incredible job. Every year, I think we've said, this has been a smooth start and every year it seems to have gotten smoother. Um, but we do recognize obviously, um, and I appreciate Ms. Benali, Mr. Mortensen recognizing the loss of student and two staff members. Um, our thoughts and prayers go out to their families at this time and we have been very vigilant, um, making sure that we have our crisis response teams at those sites or sites that could be affected, um, by these losses in our community. And so, I just wanted to make sure that you know that we take these things very seriously and make sure that our teams are there, ready to provide services for students, um, and staff and, and adults who, um, need support dealing with grief. So, um, we, we did get a strong start to the school year with respect to, we had a training with all of our, many of our staff and some of it was online and some of it was in person at Gallup High School. And I had mentioned last meeting that we had Ruby Payne who came out to talk about, um, emotional poverty. And the great thing about that presentation, we got a lot of good feedback and we're waiting for the survey results from staff, but we heard a lot of, um, informal, uh, response back about the positive and helpful strategies that Ms. Payne provides for staff when she does these trainings, uh, and it's super valuable in, in things that can be used really easily in the classroom or in the school, working with students and even with adults. Um, so it was very informative. We did record it. If the board member would like, board members would like, I can send that to you and you're welcome to watch it. It's an all-day presentation. Uh, but I can promise even if you listen to an hour of it, you'd get some really good feedback and information from it about, um, how, how to work with students specifically. The, um, you'll notice if you haven't already, uh, the signage that is on the new, on the high schools, uh, you're going to see even more so inside the building soon. Uh, for our career pathway work, we wanted to make sure our facilities, uh, people knew as they came by or entered the school facility, our students, and everybody knows what, uh, pathways are available at that school. And so, you'll see new signage on the buildings. Uh, that, that work is going to continue inside. It's not just be signage on the outside, advertising the, the work the students are doing inside, but also in the inside of the facilities. Uh, we're working on putting up posters, wallpapers, things like that to, to make, make sure that they know that they're in a more business environment and they're learning, um, and learning about their careers. So, that's something that's, that's new this year. Um, we also are continuing, continuing in conversations with DODI, uh, Department of Dene Education, uh, for the Navajo Nation. Uh, we're still working with them on, they are even more interested. I think we're to the point, we'll be bringing an MOU to the board to share our Navajo language and culture curriculum with them so they can share it with other schools across the Navajo Nation. And so, we're excited about that work. Uh, we've been working closely with them for quite a while, trying to share with them, not only the assessments that are part of that, uh, but obviously the core curriculum, which is, we've worked for years on and are continuing to work on. Uh, we're currently in the process of working on the interim assessments. We have short cycle assessments, which are three-week assessments that are completed, um, that we're using this year. Uh, but we're also, uh, developing now, uh, what we call interim assessments that happen either before, beginning of the year, end of year, or also throughout. And so, we're looking at that right now. And that might be something else we can share with DODI in the future. We will be having, I kind of, should have talked about this when I talked about signage, but with our career pathway work, um, we have had a lot of school districts and entities that have come out, uh, to see us in the past. And we're going to do a next, another exposition on some schools in our community coming this fall in October. Uh, we're actually going to have people coming not only across the country, but also the state of New Mexico, coming to visit our school district to see the work that we've done in this area. Uh, this is an opportunity for us to showcase our students and the work that they're doing and their career pathways, but also allows us to, you know, have conversations with other, conversations with other school districts about what they're doing. Uh, maybe areas that they're struggling, maybe areas that we're struggling that we can share with them, or areas that we've seen, uh, or processes that we put in place to make things work well. Um, and so, it's a great opportunity for us to showcase what we're doing in Gallup McKinley County Schools. And so, that'll, I'll give you some more information on that and the specific dates. Uh, but they'll be visiting Crown Point High School, Reima High School, and Mi'amara this year. Um, at this time, I wanted to also, we had a few changes in central office, um, since the start of the year. Faith Klein and Chris Klein will be leaving us. Uh, we appreciate them and their work for the district and for our students. And we have replacements for them. Um, and we have in, in Faith Klein, her coordinator of counseling, we have Joshua Stepney. He is not here today. Uh, he's doing a transition. He's the current principal of Navajo Elementary. Uh, he'll now be the counseling coordinator for the school district, uh, but we'll have JR Houston stand up. He's the new financial director for the school district. And so, I want to make sure that, if you didn't know JR, you haven't seen him walking around the, the office, uh, you know who he is. Uh, so we're excited for that. Um, I wanted to, I know last time at the board meeting, there were some questions about construction or wanted a little bit of a construction update. And we'll continually do that from, uh, throughout the meetings through the year, but I wanted to have Ms. Hanks come up, uh, who is a deputy superintendent, talk a little bit about some of the projects that we have going on. We have a massive amount of things that are happening at all, at all times in the school district. Uh, but I wanted to make sure that she provides some update on some of the, the progress, some of the facilities and activities in the district with construction.
President Mortensen, members of the board, superintendent, and members of the audience, um, I want to preference the beginning of this conversation by saying that next meeting, you should have our facility master plan, um, for approval. That's a five-year look at the needs of the district. And right now, our, um, value of projects that will be coming forward in that facility master plan is about $654 million at current dollar rates. We all know that there is quite a bit of escalation in cost, so I anticipate that amount going up. And, and just so you know, that's just projected within the next five years, less any of the projects that we already have obligated. Um, it's no secret that construction has escalated heavily in cost over the last five or six years and we anticipate it continuing to do so. Um, we are currently, our match of that would be about, at the current match rate would be about $161 million. And so, we are deficient about $70 million going forward in ensuring that all of the projects that we need complete in the next five years are completed. Um, so we will be asking for waivers from the public school capital outlay. Um, public school capital outlay oversight task force has met several times, including in May. One of the items that they mentioned on that was that the phase-two formula is working as intended and that they know a lot of school districts cannot meet their match. Um, this is in writing and publicly verbally stated. And so, one of the things that they put on here was factors in the formula need to be investigated and revisited. And I don't think that's a secret to any member of our board for as long as we've been attempting to get capital outlay funds. Um, to give a brief overview of current projects, um, the closest school to completion at this date is Red Rock Elementary. We are hopeful that that school will be complete by January of '25. Um, if you've been by the facility, they've been moving at a very good pace and even some interiors are being started to be finalized, so, um, we'll see that. Tohachi High School, that one is in progress. Um, they have, I believe finalized pouring the piers. We were having some issues with the mix of the concrete that they were using for the piers and the groundwork. Um, and so, we had to do some redos on that because we want to be sure that that's, building is as stable as possible. Um, for Tohachi... One moment. Um, construction is set to start in earnest by March of 20, uh, I'm sorry, by, uh, uh, January of '26. We anticipate that full building being completed, um, with the current timeline. Um, next within our radar is the Tohachi teacher housing. Um, the architects have been working very well on this project and we have been having some delays with PSFA, um, but we are still pushing that project forward. The technical school, we just got the go-ahead from the Public School Facilities Authority to use our current programming. They're asking us some additional questions, um, but we're very hopeful that we're going to get that programming award done. Um, the design is, is almost 100% done on that school, um, so that once we get that final go-ahead, we're going to be able to do the engineering and everything else behind it to get that project moving forward. Um, Crown Point Middle and High School was actually just approved for design on this meeting, so thankfully, the board did approve the design professionals that were selected. Um, so we'll begin that contract negotiation with those design professionals. Um, and our next major project that we're really pushing, um, for full replacement is Navajo Pine High School. Um, that design award was actually done in July. Contract negotiations are going to be done. And we're also working with tribal leadership, Navajo project, for the additional land that we're going to need in order to ensure that we can put a baseball and softball field along with the football field out there. That school has never had a baseball and softball home field, um, and those students have traveled for a very long time to participate in those sports. So, we're very hopeful and, and the, uh, individuals at the chapter house have been absolutely wonderful to work with. They see the need for the students. We, we couldn't be more happy with the relationship we have with that chapter. Um, Gallup High is still, um, on the, the docket for design, but, um, the priority as of right now, so we've got Red Rock almost done. Tohachi is the next major one. Navajo Pine, Thiru, um, those ones will be coming in priority. Thiru is in design. We have a design meeting on Wednesday, um, and so that one's coming together really nicely. Uh, we also have found a, for our teachage that we're building, um, just in the county, just out of town, on the west side of town. Um, we believe that we should be able to start construction on that project fairly soon. We believe we finally found a vendor. The original vendor we had slated for that project unfortunately was not able to meet the obligations, and so we have found another vendor. Um, I was trying to look through, we have a lot of systems projects that we're doing as well, which are included in the amount that I stated earlier. Were there any specific projects the board was interested in?
Um, can you provide an update on the teachage, just through the trailers?
Sure. So, we are awaiting 911 addressing and that's kind of the thing that's been going back and forth is in order to put individual meters into those trailer housings, we need a 911 addressing to be done. And we are currently working with all the agencies that are involved with that process to try to get that completed.
And then that's it? They can move in?
I know, I know. Um, we talk about it almost every week. We talked about it first thing this morning. Um, it's going to be a really good thing because we know that it's really tight out there in the housing.
Ms. Hanks, you mentioned about, um, Gallup High School kind of, uh, back behind there. I mean, it, it's, uh, moving forward somehow with design or any of that kind of stuff. I mean, it's still in the, in the works and going forward?
It is, in the, in the design and the works going forward. Um, we just have some more structural need, I would say. Um, so in the Crown Point area, there's some pretty significant roofing problems that we're having. Um, and so, we're kind of having to reshuffle some things slightly in order to make sure that we're replacing things as efficiently as possible to avoid sunken costs and fixing things instead of just full replacement. Um, but yes, it is definitely still within the five-year facility master plan.
I'm sure at Gallup High School, just having sidewalks and rain will make a big difference over the previous design.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes.
Um, back in July, we had a leadership retreat that we, that I attended and one of the breakout session was PSCOC School Facilities Ranking and Funding Opportunities that Andrew Martinez and Alice Ramos, Ramos, um, did the, um, breakout session. And one of the questions that I asked and wanted more, um, clarification on was why is, um, PS, uh, COC not helping, um, our school districts with special ed classrooms and culturally relevant classrooms? And he told me at that time that, um, there has been an outcry or more of a need, so they are, they're going to build that into, I, I don't know if it's a percentage or I don't know how you guys do all that, but they're going to start, um, putting that in the specs. I don't know what it's called. But, but I was thankful to hear that and I even asked Joe Guillen, who is executive director, over that. And he goes, "Well, now's your time to ask," so, um, that's what I did and he's aware of it too. So, I don't know when that change is taking place and I don't know if you guys are ever notified, but that, and I told him it's going to be big for us because we're tired of not having that space for our special needs children and for our native culture classrooms, so.
If I could add to that, if you can continue to add pressure, they told us five, six years ago, they was, they're going to have adequacy standards for teachages. They still don't have those. And so, just because they say it in a meeting, let's not believe that it's necessarily going to happen until we, we see it happen. And so, I, I would appreciate the board when you have those conversations continually to push for teach which, teachage standards, sped classrooms as you mentioned, um, off-site utilities being covered, uh, because that really hits rural areas. And then you also mentioned, and I would agree with the Navajo language and culture classes, making sure those are, are provided in the adequacy standards. So, thank you for bringing that up.
Mm-hmm. And President Mortensen, members of the board, member Benali, I will definitely say that one of the things that the, the firm that is working with us on our facility master plan was, was a bit trepidatious. They were saying, "Look at these amounts, you know, is your board going to be shocked?" And I said, "No, because my board is well, very well informed. They're very involved with what the school district does. And so, I don't know who you work with, but our board, we are very transparent with them about the needs and it's not a secret and it hasn't been a secret for a long period of time." And I will also echo Superintendent Hyatt's comments. The delay, I think, is intentional. I will be fully transparent because they promised us lots of things, but actually getting those things is a whole different story. And so, without the support of the board and the ongoing advocacy, we, we wouldn't even have the significant changes that we have now. I mean, they wouldn't even look at us for teachages before and at least they're talking about teachages now.
And, and then he, and he did mention that at that time, that there was funding now for teachage. And he, he did a whole, like, different, um, where, how they can assist. And, but I didn't grab, I was looking through my, my pack, but I don't, I don't think I grabbed that, um, PowerPoint slide, but it should be under the, um, NSBA, um, website because they said they'll put all the presentation PowerPoints on that, so.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
President Mortensen, members of the board, we'll be going to the PSCOC in the near future also to talk to them about our projects coming up and getting approvals for that. And so, you're open invitation to any of you that want to attend and we'll keep you updated on those dates.
Thank you.
Um, President Mortensen, members of the board, Superintendent Hyatt, I would also like to thank Catherine Chrysler, who's here with me today. She has been a great asset. She's been helping to move a lot of these projects along, really been working with contractors, trying to get things moving and keep things moving. Um, I don't think it's any secret as well that the state of New Mexico needs more staff, that are engineers, construction workers, plumbers, electricians, all of the trades, which is why we cannot get that trade school open fast enough.
President Mortensen?
Yes, sir. Um, yeah, did you say Tohachi completion date would be, we expect it for January 2026?
President Mortensen, member Mitchell, yes, we are very hopeful that January of 2026 will be the opening date for Tohachi.
Okay. And then another question, could you give me an update on the bleachers for the football field?
Yes, uh, President Mortensen, member Mitchell, we are working with a contractor now. There is a guaranteed date by September. Um, and so, we are holding the, the company to that and I know Catherine's probably nodding behind me. Um, we did experience a delay with that and we contacted the vendor right away, um, because it was our priority not to interrupt football season. That's always our priority is not to impact students and unfortunately, we were a bit behind, um, on that project, but it's still a focus for us.
Um, could you please tell me the plans for the announcer stand and restrooms and concession?
Sure. Uh, member more, uh, President Mortensen, member Mitchell, um, we will have a temporary concession stand-up as well as portable restrooms. We are still looking at that one unit that would actually house the concession and the restrooms. Um, we are actually talking to the vendor right now. We were getting, uh, quotes last week and we are going to be bringing some of that forward. But we do have some temporary solutions in place.
Announcer stand?
It's a part of the bleachers.
Yeah.
The restrooms?
Okay.
Yeah, the, so, yes.
Those will all be in one unit. Well, not, not the announcer stands, it's a part of the bleachers, uh, but the concessions and locker rooms included. Um, and those other things that you mentioned will be in, in one unit. That's what we're looking at. Uh, but temporarily, um, we'll have to, we had some other, um, stopgaps we had to put in place until we figure out what that's going to look like and where it's going to be placed.
Thank you.
Again, I think, I think one of the concerns was that facility being turned out, uh, torn down beforehand, before we had those facilities ready. Um, that kind of had to do with, we had somebody that could tear it down, um, and make room for things as we're doing construction and getting ready to put the new things in, the bleachers. And so, uh, it was kind of an unfortunate timeline of events, but that's kind of the way it went down, um, in order to not only be efficient, um, but also be effective in getting everything in there that we need to with the new school, so.
Great, thank you.
Board members, if there's no other questions, um, I'll move on to our other presenting.
I did have another question. Okay, who, I'm sorry, who did you say was going to be, um, head of counseling?
Joshua Stepney. Um, he is the current principal of Navajo Elementary.
Okay. Thank you. And, um, I want to try to be really nice about this, but, um, you know, we, we, we asked our, um, administrators in our departments to really help us develop that Navajo language curriculum for our students. And I know they worked and really hard on that with other teachers in our district, um, and other administrators in our district. And, you know, we're giving it to the Navajo Nation and DODI, um, to use that for our other students that are not part of our district. Um, but we, we really realize how valuable this curriculum can be and it took a lot of work. And my concern is that, um, you know, we've done things in the past that we have taken the initiative or the forefront of, to help our children and yet, um, we're not recognized for that accomplishments. Um, just like in once, the Yasi Martinez lawsuit. You know, we're never, it's, it, it's like, we were the lead of plaintiffs on that lawsuit and that changed a lot of things that are happening in our state today to help, um, our, um, at-risk students. And, uh, but no one says Gallup McKinley County, you know, no one says that, you know, we were the board that approved that to go on with that lawsuit. And the recognition is not there and I'm, I'm, I don't want the same thing to happen to this. This is developed by our staff, by our teachers here at Gallup McKinley County Schools. And when, when it's exposed out there, I want to continue that because the credibility to that with the hard-working hours that generated from this school district. So, that's just my concern about that, sir.
Sure. President Mortensen, Ms. Benali, I actually had a conversation with it this morning, kind of about that topic. And throughout the time we've worked with DODI, uh, in the last many months, six months or so, on this particular initiative, uh, we've had other school districts a part of some of our trainings and some of our, um, presenting of this curriculum. Uh, and DODI, in my experience, has been very transparent stating that this is coming from Gallup McKinley County Schools. Um, we actually talked this morning about, if we're able to put together an MOU between the board and DODI board, um, that, that we would definitely be publicly celebrating that partnership and the release of that curriculum. And so, hopefully, um, I mean, it's for, it's for students. We're not doing it, we're obviously doing it for our students, but if it can help others, we want to be able to help anybody, anybody that we can. And there has been a lot of work put into it. Um, so I understand the desire for recognition, um, but our ultimate desire is to help other students also, so.
Thank you. Any other questions while we're here? Okay. Mr. Hyatt, go ahead.
Um, President Mortensen, members of the board, uh, we'll move on to, uh, the next item. We have a few presentations, uh, today. Um, first, we're going to, there was a, a request for some information or presentation on security. Uh, and then following that, uh, we'll have another presentation on counseling, but I want to start with Assistant Superintendent Kaidan Montano, uh, accompanied by Jake Stokes, um, who oversees, uh, security also. And so, they'll be giving the presentation today.
Good afternoon, President Mortensen, members of the board. I'm here today to talk about safety in Gallup McKinley County Schools for the '24-'25 school year. They're trained in our Evolve metal detectors. They are trained in Rave. They are CPI trained, including the de-escalation training. They are first aid, CPR, stop the bleed, and AED trained. Our SSOs are a Level One Security Trained Guard. That is a state training, and we have several of them that are trained at a Level Two and Three. Um, we have a certified OSHA inspector that is um on our team and he coordinates with um campuses, with M and O, and NMPED building inspections. We have four former retired police officers, Gallup PD, Zuni PD, McKinley County Sheriff, and New Mexico State Police. So we, we're well represented. Um, ICS training, and this is Incident Command. I think I went through all of that. Um, we have a really strong connection with Gallup Police Department, Sheriff's Office, Navajo Police. I hope I was clear on that. Any questions?
I've got a couple of questions.
Okay.
Are there any other board members? I'll let you go first.
Go ahead.
Um, uh, one of the first slides you had on there was about the scope of work. And one of the things I didn't see on there that I, I wondered about, if there was a plan for um extracurricular activities. Uh, sporting events, dances, whatever, you know, graduations, maybe community events that might be at our facilities as well. Um, and not just in, at the actual, like, you know, football game or whatever, but maybe out in the parking lot as well, which is, you know, our, our property and our stewardship.
Yes, e- President Mortensen, each school is a, a little different depending on the community, but we do um make sure we have security guards in place at those type of events. Sometimes we contract with, with Red Rock Security. Sometimes we use our own guards as well.
Okay. Any other questions down there? I've got another one if you guys don't have anything else.
Go ahead, sir, I'll be right after you.
I could just make up questions all day long. Um, these cameras you talked about, do they, do they do any? Uh, I don't even know if this is a thing. I mean, do they do any kind of like, like facial recognition where they match up like so that, you know, where you'd be able to, and I don't know if this is just in the movies or whatever, but if there's, you know, something that, like where you'd be able to like know where every person was at any time of day, whether they're in this classroom or that classroom or whatever, just based on that kind of stuff.
President Mortensen, yes, our camera system does have that capability.
Will that help improve our attendance as well, like our attendance taking or recording? Can it be, you know, double time for that?
Possibly.
We, we don't use it for that.
Oh, okay.
For other reasons, but uh we have Avery Kessler here also. He can fill in if there's other inform- information he wants to provide. But the camera system we purchased after we have the old Honeywell system. Uh, this new system is quite capable in lots of different ways. Exactly what you talked about, somebody walks in the building, it can capture that person and quickly find out everywhere they went. You can just follow that person everywhere they go and the cameras will switch to the new cameras in the new location of the school and track that person. Um, not only for that day, but it'll, it'll, it'll track it for whenever we need it during whatever period of time. And so it allows us to be much quicker in note, in, in recognizing maybe threats potentially, or could be, it could be for a positive reason too, depending on what it is. Um, but we're able to, to track people quite easily and it, it's instant. So at night, all of our cameras are obviously motion sensors, so if somebody walks in the building, we can quick, we, we get notification that somebody has entered the building and that camera will watch that person. And obviously we have a key card access notification also of who actually um came in the building. But Avery, do you want to give a little more update on, or a little more information on our system, what its capabilities are?
Yes, sir. Um, so we also tie in our door access with it. So if you use your key card on one of the doors, that camera takes snapshot of you and it'll keep that recorded. We can have alert sent. But for facial recognition is good for a student that's a runner. You can get their picture put in there and it'll show you what cameras they've been in front of and what exit they used to get out of the building, so we know exactly what direction to go to find them. Um, anybody that's not supposed to be on our property, we can have pictures of them as well and have that saved in the system so that we can identify them when they're coming up to the building or getting into the building. And we can use the facial recognition that saves in there. And we can just pull them up anytime we need to to verify they weren't on prop.
Pretty impressive.
I think it does license plates too, doesn't it? Or outside ones, it'll recognize license plate, um, who's car.
And we can save those license plates in there and associate them to a person. So when that vehicle's on the property, we know that they were there. Um, we've got our Burkata guest system that Ms. Montano had mentioned. That's at all the entrances, that also takes a picture of them, that ties into the system, so we can use those pictures as well if we needed to. If there's an incident or anything that happens, we can pull that up as well.
That's pretty, pretty handy. I mean, I don't know, it's all this neat technology to help keep our kids safe. Um, I have a quick question about, do, do we have any, uh, does our school district have any drug dogs or is there? I mean, what, what, what's the rules or laws or whatever around that? Like, it seems like once in a while, uh, like one of my kids will be like, oh yeah, they told us there's going to be a drug dog there tomorrow. And I always think to myself, why would you tell them? But I don't know what the rules are ab- about that. Could you tell us how that works and how often we do that kind of stuff?
Sure, we, um, President Mortensen, we work with McKinley County Sheriff's Department. They do have the drug dogs and up per request, uh, Mr. Solan works with um that department to ha- to request when they go out to school. So, um, we try to do it spontaneous, so how your son knew, I'm not sure. Most of the time, it's just, we, we take them in, see what we find.
But I've heard the same thing too. They, they say that the rude, the drug dogs are coming tomorrow and you're like, why? Why do you tell kids that drug dogs are coming?
Well, I'm glad, I thought maybe my son just had like special juice or some inside knowledge. Turns out everybody knows when the drug dogs are coming.
They, uh, Mr. Mortensen, members of the board, they don't, they don't always know. Sometimes we, we spring it on them, but sometimes when we're going from school to school, we'll do different schools in a day. And sometimes kids notify each other in other schools just to say that they may be coming to your school. So, we actually had conversations this week about the possibility of getting our own drug dog. That we're, that way we're not relying on the police department who has limited resources. Um, I was going to talk about it a little bit later, but we have a, a growing substantial drug problem in our communities, um especially with the legalization of marijuana. Um, the allowance from our state government and legislators of allowing the pa- uh packaging and the way it's packaged of vapes and um federal, at least illegal substances and the way it's packaged and, and distributed. Uh, we are seeing all kinds of things um and, and packaged in different ways that students are able to hide um and bring them to school. Uh, so like whether it's a pen that looks like this, could easily be a vape pen. Um, all, all kinds, USB drives, I mean, all kinds of things that we're seeing. Some of it's obviously when you drive down the road in Gallup or any part of New Mexico now. Um, it looks like candy stores and it's packaged that way. Uh, and so, one of the things I was going to mention for our discussion later on is possible legislation to either curb that or uh help curb that through legislative process. Um, I think, in my opinion, the state's turned a blind eye to it. They lo- they love the revenue from it, but they don't see the damage and the growing problem we have with our students uh in our schools. And the effect it has on them and those that may not be using it, but the effect it has on the classroom with others in the classroom that aren't participating and, and using. And so, um, anyways, that was a good lea- lead into that, but I'll talk about that later.
Any other questions, board members?
Um, yes, thank you very much. Um, I just want to first say, you know, this is something that, you know, I, I kept asking um our superintendent to bring before us. And, and the reason for that is, you know, it's new school year. We hear about different things that are happening in our school district and that, like Mike said, some of the new um legislation that goes through that affects our schools. And I just really want to be prepared. I, and having this eased my mind and then also going back to our community or the, our parents that are watching, or I can refer to our parents to watch this um board meeting to hear all this information that we received will be beneficial. So that's the, the main reason why I continue to push this, to bring it to the forefront of our meeting. Um, a couple of questions, I, and I did send some questions to Mike and I'm so thankful he um provide, forwarded on for me. Um, but one of the things I wanted to ask was, um, the bus cameras, um, or cameras on the buses, I know that has saved us um a few times with incidents that happened. Are they continuing to be installed into all of our buses?
I'll answer that. Uh, Mr. Mortensen, Ms. Benali, uh, we have cameras on all of our buses and Suburbans that take students. Um, that also includes audio. Uh, I also didn't mention that in our schools and some places, we also have audio. It's been very helpful in um, in our investigations, sometimes in our schools too. Uh, and so that is pro- that, that hat, that's on all of our students, uh, and GPS. And then also on our other vehicles, we don't have cameras on all the other vehicles that are being used by um other administrators. And then also on our other vehicles, we don't have cameras on all the other vehicles that are being used by other administrators or other staff. But we do have GPS on all those vehicles also. And those, those GPS systems are, can give a lot of information also about what's happening with that particular vehicle outside of audio and outside of video.
Okay, thank you. And I think one of the things that was very beneficial when I seen him do a training, with Sheriff Mariano doing the training on drugs. And, and I think that he's letting a lot of that information that people are hiding or not hiding, but the, you know, people don't want us to know. And, and that, I was amazed of some of the stuff that I was like, what? They're, they're doing that now? So I don't know if that, if we ever offered that training to our teachers so they can know what they're looking out for, like you said, the pin. They have them in USB forms and, you know, the teachers are not aware of these things, how they're being sneaky about it. So I don't know if Sheriff Mariano can, you know, opposably do that at one of our staff development trainings. And I know we don't have metal detectors at all schools, but are we going to be implementing that? I think that was something we were kind of talking about as a test run. But are we gonna, what's happening with the metal detectors?
Mr. Mortensen, Ms. Benali, we do have them available. We have some sites that are obviously serious, significant problems. Not necessarily with guns, but with metal devices coming to the school. And so we did pilot last year. We're going to continue to look at what's, what's realistic and efficient for school sites. We, we're tending to find more use of whether it's drugs or other things happening in our two local high schools here in town, the larger ones versus the county. But we did pilot last year, what Ms. Montano mentioned was the Evolve system. And we're continually looking at that or maybe other products. They are, they are very expensive, but they're very quick in identifying whether somebody has a weapon on their person. And so we're continuing to look at that, so yes.
The other question I had was, it was mentioned that we do do the drills at the schools. And I believe you said the safety officer is the one that monitors that? And is it written down? And how is that monitored? I guess we can, I want to ask.
Member Benali, yes, we have a, a, a log that each school maintains on what drills are happening in school. And we keep that on a team site because that is a state requirement that we have to turn in. So, so Mr. Solan kind of tracks that and makes sure we're getting in all of our drills each year.
It's, it's in conjunction with the principal, the site supervisor, so it's not just the security.
Are we, you, you mentioned we have 30 SSOs now. Is that fully staffed or are we still in need of more security guards?
So over the summer, we actually, a couple resigned. I think we have 27 currently right now allocated for 30. So we are moving to interview and fill the, the last few.
And then we're not going to have anymore?
At this point, that's all we're budgeting this year.
Okay.
There, one, I was going to mention something about that really quickly was it's a little more difficult when there's an as-needed basis. And so that way, it currently makes it easy to hire Red Rock for those, add needed positions. Because they're not, not really full-time and so there's not a salary behind it. But there may be a come a point where we could do that ourselves possibly. If we have people that are on call that we can do hourly work for us, but right now we're not in that position.
Okay. One of the things I know when I, like for me, I go to Thoreau High School or they have the guard shacks there. And a couple of things bothered me when I would go there. They just wave at me from the guard shack and they don't really see what I have in my vehicle. Or maybe they know who I am. I don't know, but it just seemed like it was just a wave. You know, like, okay, I could take a whole bomb in there and you guys wouldn't even know. So that kind of, that's the first thing that bothered me. And, but I don't know how we can, I don't want them to keep getting up and going over there. I don't know if we can, if there's, look at the UNM, right? You have a UNM staff parking and a UN student parking. Are we able to get some kind that indicates that, that we can, they can put on their windshield? That way, that is something that we can, the guards can see, okay, that's a teacher, you know, and, and let the vehicle go, go in. Which brings me to my other issue that I have at Thoreau Teacherage. There's a place where you first go in and you put in, it's a key monitor thing. And I don't think that's still not working for the teacherage. And I don't know if they scan something to let the, the teachers, teachers go in. But right now the gates are still all open. Anybody can go in and out. So I wasn't sure if that was, if we're implementing that in all our teacherage? Or is that something that's just at the RUE? So those are my, my questions on the guard shack and on the passes.
President Mortensen, Ms. Benali, I'll talk about the guard shacks a little bit. And then Jevana, you may want to talk about the gates at the teacherage. So with respect to the guard shacks, you should not see that this year. I'm assuming that's in the past.
Yes.
So that's one of the reasons we didn't have the best accountability for contracted people working on our campuses. That's why we transitioned to hiring our own SSOs so that they could be onsite and do a better job. And I think that's happened. So if you drive up to a school now, you should not see, somebody should greet you and talk to you. And we don't necessarily want to get into the tag situation because something could be copied. Or you never know what could happen that day. We could have somebody that's a staff member that the security checks and may realize that they, you know, they may need assistance. Or maybe there's an issue that they shouldn't come onto the campus. And so I don't want it, I want it there to be a contact by the security at every time a vehicle comes on our campus. I don't, it doesn't matter who it is. And we'll, we'll watch you more closely now since we haven't in the past, but.
Yes.
Very suspicious, but Ms. Hanks, will you talk a little bit?
Is there, is there cameras there that we can see the vehicles leaving and entering?
We have cameras on our parking lots when they come in, not right at the guard shack, but on the outside of the building.
President Mortensen, Member Benali, yes, those gates should be working. And the ideal is, is that yes, they do swipe a card and code, so I will follow up on that notification. And I will talk to team about making sure that those are operational. That's just to help keep out any unexpected visitors to the teacherage. It also helps to keep out some of the animals that sometimes wander into the teacherage.
And the only reason why I'm concerned, and I don't, I hate to say this, but it goes right into our schools. There's, there's nothing, you know what I mean, that, to prevent that. So there's, if there was a gate there, then yeah, but it's still kind of unsafe.
Mr. Mortensen. Go ahead. Yes, more questions down there?
Okay, I just had a couple of questions. And the one I was, one question I had is, you know, the company that we have for the cameras that did all the, are they keeping up with training and, and maintenance seeing these cameras as we go along? Or, or is it going to be like the previous ones who just come, put them up and leave?
Mr. Mortensen, Mr. Mitchell, we actually have taken that over in-house. Avery is actually the person that provides training and actually is in charge of all the cameras and also the repair of those cameras. And so we're not reliant on somebody having to come from Albuquerque or wherever and taking that time to fix them. We have the capacity in-house and we, we monitor and take care of all those items in-house.
Great, thanks.
You should see the, you should see the TV in his office. It's like, it's like the White House Situation Room in there.
Well, we're going to go there. I want to see that.
Yeah, after the meeting, come on down.
And then also, has the response time improved or has any, I mean, we're talking about safety in our rural areas, you know, and with all the collaboration you say is going on. Is there anything that's showing that our response time has, is going to be improving when it comes to our schools?
I'm assuming, Mr. Mitchell, you're talking about police response times, right?
Yes.
I, I've personally have seen it better, I'll let Ms. Montano speak from her opinion. From what I've seen, it's been much faster. That doesn't mean that it's always fast enough and there's not enough police officers, especially in our rural areas. But we've, like I said, I think all of these entities that are now working better together with our emergency response teams from the county, our work in doing I love you guys across the county, our work with the police department, I think it's helped. But I believe that there is still a growing, a need and a growing need probably, especially in the county area, especially the Navo Nation, and getting police officers in all locations. But I've seen it get better, but again, there's always room for improvement in that area also.
So I, with that thought, maybe that would be one of our, could be one of our resolutions to maybe be able to house some type of law enforcement on our school grounds. I know that at this point we were not, we're not able to because of law. Maybe that's something we can ask for and for our rural areas because of the response time and then.
I think the Navo Nation should try to do that. And that, it's not just for our schools, right? It's for our communities. I really think that they should be providing the, the police officers for those areas. Sometimes we, we get everything dumped on us. Doesn't mean that we're not willing to support and help and work together. But I really think we shouldn't take on responsibility of other government entities either. And so I want to be careful of that personally, I would, that's what I would advocate for, is that we push, whether it's the county or the city or whether it's Navo Nation, that they're making sure that our, our communities are protected. It's not just about our schools, but maybe there is an opportunity to share.
I guess I'm talking more or less, maybe being able to house an officer in our teacherages or something, you know, just to.
And we do that now. We provide space for them if they have a trailer or whatever. They can, we've done that in a few different communities right now. I think Rama had one and David skied and I love Twin Lakes, still does or not, but. But there's been, we do have a few in the area. So we, we have provided utility spots for trailers to be parked in order to help out. But not at every site. Has there been somebody that's wanted that?
And, okay, so my last question is I guess flashing lights. You know, we have no flashing lights right here at Chi Dodge. That, that one has been knocked down since way last year. Tohachis, we're going on two years and three years. And we have zero flashing lights in Tohachi at this time, so.
President Mortensen, Member Mitchell, unfortunately, we're not allowed to install those units. We have to rely on our county, city and tribal counterparts. Because we're not actually allowed to run the programs or install them. We have purchased all of the units for those and we continue to follow up. But we, we are having issues here in the city as well. We were just recently told that the person who ran the programs for the city doesn't work for the city anymore and nobody else knows how the program runs. So please know that we're continuing to follow up on that, but, but we cannot install the units. Because it is on a, it is on a publicly traveled road.
Is there a way we can, as a board, write a letter to the county commissioners to request our, make like what Kevin said? And I know, I even asked about Thoreau Elementary to be, have the lights up for people to slow down. Because our kids walk across that street right there in front of the Thoreau Elementary and it's just, I, I, it's the same scenario. No one's going to react until something bad happens. You know, and I hate to see that, but I don't know if we can do something like that. If we can write a letter to the county commissioners requesting we have these lights that we would like to be put up.
And President Mortensen, Member Mitchell and Member Benali, there are multiple agencies. So the county is one piece, Tohachi is the county, near Chi Dodge is tribal land. So we have been working with some tribal officials and in the other areas as well. So there are multiple entities that are involved depending on who actually owns the thoroughfare.
I think we, a letter's doable. Yeah, we could definitely do that. Maybe have it approved the next meeting.
And with that said, us doing a letter plus maybe asking the chapters to do a resolution maybe?
Sure, that'd be great.
Thank you.
Good idea. Thank you.
One more comment, Mr. Mortensen. I just want to say thank you to our security staff, our surveillance staff, everybody that's taken part of this. Because, you know, we don't want anything to happen to our children. I think if, if people know out there that our security system is up, you know, it deters them from doing anything to our children. Or even on our buses and it, and it eases our heart. And I appreciate the detailed report today. And, you know, all of our 30 or 27 security officers that are out there taking the initiative to work even without Red Rock or maybe sometimes with Red Rock and bigger events. You know, I appreciate them for helping us and our children, keeping them safe. So, jahat, ntskazaw, jahat.
Thank you, Ms. Benali. Ms. Montano, thank you very much. That was a great presentation. We should have you do the, the audit report and the, the report on the bonds. And do it more often.
President Mortensen, we have one more presentation. Ms. Faith Klein, Counseling Coordinator is next, and we'll have her come up.
Can I ask a real quick question? I'm sorry. Are we fully equipped with our security? Like, do they have all the, not microphone, what did I say? Radios and like are they, they can be reachable with even in the rural areas? They all have, okay. Thank you.
President Mortensen, members of the board, Superintendent Mr. Hyatt, thank you all for giving some time today to discuss one of the programs that we run through our district, McKinney-Vento. So I'll be going over some general information and then some data that we have from the last couple of years to discuss the growth of the program.
Again, thank you very much for your report. I, again, I attended the leadership retreat and this is where I was texting Mike and I think Jovanna about this program and it just breaks my heart that, you know, I'm sorry, seventy thousand dollars, even the funding you requested for it, a hundred and ten thousand dollars is nothing. That is nothing compared to what our children have to go through. You know, and one of, some of the board members there that we attended the conference with were also, you know, telling their stories, like our neighbors are from CCSD. You know, they have their plant closure and then we had our, the one in Pruitt and the one in Jameson close and we, and both of us saw an increase in our homeless numbers. And, you know, we were saying, but what are we doing? Like, what are we trying to do for our children to advocate for this? And the guy that did the presentation, he was doing a presentation on something else, but he brought this one up. And I think we spent more time on this than his actual presentation. But and that's when I started asking more questions of, you know, how can we help our students with the funding? It's a valuable funding. We've helped and I, I remember when we talked to Jovanna during COVID, there were some questions that, and this is an avenue she used a lot of the funding to help our children during the COVID times and you know, I want to really ask my colleagues here. You know, one of the things I wrote down on my notes is why isn't there any legislation to increase this funding? I don't know where it goes, maybe operational funding and the state match, some kind of state match that can help our children. And I don't like the word homeless either, so I'm so glad to hear that you guys are wanting to change that word. Because, you know, we really don't want that stigma. I still, I still, I deal with the stigma with suicide prevention, you know, and in our culture, you don't talk about death. And that's where it was so hard for me to do my job at times, but we're making those breakthroughs and I think if we can continue to put a legislation together, colleagues, and really fight again for our children in this area, I'm sure we can get some additional funding, not just for our school district, but statewide if we can continue to provide some legislation to the New Mexico School Board Association that we can adopt there and then get that support and move it up to one of our representatives here. You know, we always are told we have a powerhouse of legislators and, you know, they need to help us with this, you know, Mr. Mignoz, Lundstrom, Wanda, Pinto. You know, we really need their support on this. And then I think that's one thing I really would like to request from my colleagues, that we push this forward. And I know our children are in need and we need to continue to support. And I just want to read this because this is from Helen Fox. I included it in my questions. And she works for, she used to work for APS. And she says, "These students are the most joyous, wonderful children you could ever work with." "Because if any of us had to live, live any given day like some of them do, and someone would expect us to get up and come to school and have a smile on our face and act like everything is just wonderful, I'm not sure if I could do it. These children do it every day. They are absolutely incredible and resilient." It's what she put. She retired, but she oversaw this funding for the children. And that's true. You know, we are expecting our children to pass all these exams with the rumble in their tummy or not even having a warm place to sleep. I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Benali. Appreciate. You have a question down there? Go ahead. Mr. Mitchell, you're first.
I was just wondering, how are we working with transportation? I mean, you know, we have, already I've had a grandma, you know, approached me and saying that, you know, she lives in Coyote Canyon and that, but she's taking care of a grandchild, but sometimes that grandchild needs to go and get off and stay with the aunt for a week or whatever. And already the, our transportation department was giving them a hard time saying, no, we can't do that and we're not going to do that for you. You know, they need to get off. We're going to drop them off at your house. And she's like, well, how are you going to drop them off at my house? There's going to be nobody home. And Coyote Canyon and Twin Lakes is pretty, you know, there's a distance between there, you know. I don't want my grandchild just dropped off and I'm telling you right now that I'm not going to be home. We're sharing the, you know, the care. They're going to be staying with their aunt for a week or two weeks and then they'll come back and stay with me. But I don't, so that's what I'm, my concern is what, how are we doing with transportation and how we're communicating that?
President Mortensen, Member Mitchell, thank you for the question. So first and foremost, what would happen in situations like this is once they're identified as McKinney-Vento, if they need special transportation for a circumstance, just like you're stating, they let the school know and then the school will work with myself or it would be Mr. Stephanie, and we work with transportation directly. So we will call Mr. Bond and we will let him know what's going on. And then he arranges, sometimes we do suburban, sometimes it'll be a simple bus change depending on the address. Like if that student is with his aunt one week and the grandma the next, then he would write a certain bus number for whatever bus that he needs to ride that day. Or again, like last year too, when we, when the Lexington was still open, we also had students that got picked up from the Lexington, taken to school and then picked up and taken home. So we 100% can assist with any sort of transportation and if they just reach out to the school and let them know they need to speak to a counselor or the SSA, whatever we have on staff, then they are able to support us in that process.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mortensen, one of the other questions I had was, you know, our local schools are very blessed to have the Gallup food pantry here that could meet some of those needs. And I think we need to continue to remember our rural area schools that don't have that means. And there was a time that through the community center, I would take like fifteen gallon sized bags that had water and some little snacks in there that I would take to the counseling office for children that needed to take something home with them. And I don't know if we're able to do that through our food service program. And the counselor knew who they were, so that way it wasn't, and they would come back to their office and put it in their backpack right after school, especially on Fridays. And so I don't know if we can continue something to that effect with our schools. But I think we need to also think about that because we don't have any food pantries near us except, and we can't expect our families that are in this need to travel and to Gallup to the food pantry.
President Mortensen, Member Benali, so actually the community pantry here in Gallup will service all of McKinley County, including our rural schools. And actually, one thing that we did do last year for some families actually at Thiru, high and through mid were when they, when the family signed up for the food pantry for one of the programs that they have, where they get a food box twice a month, the liaison was actually coming in and picking up that, those food boxes and taking it back to the school. So we have actually done that in a number of cases. And then also at the elementary school level, Food for Kids program that the community pantry puts on, it will actually provide thirty-five bags of food for students to take home on Fridays. Thursdays or Fridays that they'll take home for over the weekend, so those students have food over the weekend. We are hopeful that in the future, the community pantry and the donors that run this program would be able to elevate that to mid and high. Right now it is only at elementary, but one way we have worked it out where if some families where if some families don't want the assistance at, let's say, through elementary and we have a couple of extra bags, we'll send those bags up to the mid or the high to ensure that none of the food goes to waste and it gets to students who are in need.
So they're doing that right now?
Food for Kids starts in one week. And then any of the community pantry programs, which I did go over with school counselors, SSAs and social workers on last Friday, any of those programs are ready to go right now. And they have all the information, not only from the presentation I gave on Friday, but it's also in our counseling teams that they can access at any time to provide families with. These are the programs that are available to you and here is how we can help.
So the number of kids that we have, the five hundred and eighty-nine kids divided by the seventy thousand, that's a little over a hundred dollars, that's all, for the year, for that one child.
Correct. Uh, Member Benali, we also, because we had some ARP funds from last year, we were able to expend those and, and we were able to stock up on a lot of items this year. So we feel pretty good about our inventory currently. And then we are gonna use the seventy thousand that was brought in for eye exams and then to replenish whatever we're expending out to students as it gets low in inventory.
So the other question I have and probably a Giovanna question is, how much more after the seventy thousand does our district pick up a cost for?
President Mortensen, Member Benali, it's always on a case by case basis every year. There's, there's always gonna be extraordinary circumstances. We've had some students who lost their homes due to fire who were in a need that we've supported in the past. But the reality is, is because of the limitation on the funding, there's often not enough identified need. And so that's what Faith, as she had mentioned, Mrs. Klein, we really wanna be sure that everyone knows that if they're in need, they need to come forward so that we can figure out a comprehensive plan and really de-stigmatizing the program. There is nothing wrong ever for asking for help. We want our students here, ready to learn. And in order to do that, they need to know that they're safe, secure, have food, have a stable way to get to school. So I would say I'm unable to quantify that at this time. But on a case by case basis, as we have run out of funds, the counseling department has come to the district and asked for special circumstance, which often is granted.
Because I'm just thinking, like, if we go to the legislators, I'm pretty sure that would be their question. How much more would be suffice for you guys to utilize additional funding for? Like, they're gonna say, an amount, you know what I mean? So I think if, if we do write up, and I don't know, you know, how, what are we gonna be asking for? Double the price? I don't know. Um, I don't know. That's why I was asking, how much of our own funding have we put into this program in the past?
And President Mortensen, Member Benali, we've maximized the use of the ESAR funds. And I would say that those were about the level that we need every year. And we got about three hundred thousand dollars in those. So I, I would feel confident in bringing that number forward. And I would also like to state that the funds we're currently getting are all federal flow-through. The state currently does not contribute any funds to this cause.
Thank you.
All right, I've got a few questions. Um, that number that you said, what was it, like five, five hundred and eighty-nine kids?
Yes.
How, what is, what does that compare? Do we have any data, like what that compares to other districts our size?
Sure. President Mortensen, so as far as districts that run our size, I would say, I think the closest probably be Farmington. I don't know how big they are, but they, they run about eight hundred.
Eight hundred-ish?
About eight hundred. And then, I mean, APS, that I know they're, they're larger enrollment wise, not geographically roughly, but they run about twelve hundred kiddos.
Okay. Um, now with, with these kids, I mean, what, what's the end goal that we're trying to, to accomplish? I mean, I understand we're, our job here is to educate these kids and so we're trying to, everything is to facilitate that, but I mean, is it like, is this something that they like, you know, the goal is for them to be not in the program or to help their parents find a job or to help them find a house to live in? Or I mean, what, what is, what is the end goal?
Sure. President Mortensen, members of the board, so first and foremost, we're trying to get these families stable. So again, McKinney Vento families typically are very mobile. And what we're trying to do is, is have them be stable and make sure that there's kids coming to the same school throughout the entire school year, even if again, they're, let's say, they've been enrolled at Turpin, but then they get housing close to Catherine Miller. But if they have been at, at Turpin their entire, you know, maybe their fourth grade, they've been there since they were pre-K, that would probably be disruption to their academics if we were to rip them out and make them go to Catherine Miller. So we really try to do things like that for those students, keep them engaged. Again, and then with that case management piece, we are really trying to help families hol- holistically across the board. So we're looking at community resources for jobs if parents need it. We are looking for, if they need help getting connected to state or federal assistance. We are looking at if they need any behavioral, mental health services. So really try to encompass all of it. I mean, it kind of, it maybe that's a cop-out answer in terms of not giving a ton of specifics, but really it comes down to stability.
It's a pretty wide, pretty broad goal, okay.
Right.
What about donations? Is the, this, is the district able to accept donations? And what kinds of things are you looking for from donations?
President Mortensen, members of the board, yes, we are always looking for donations. That's one of the big reasons why we have like Soul for Souls, baby to baby. Really, we're looking for anything to do with clothing, hygiene supplies. You know, even last year, I know we bought a few heaters for houses, things of that nature. We also looked at buying some like portable showers and things of that nature as well. So we never try to get too specific because a lot, I would say, we could probably make it work. If they're willing to donate something to support our families, I would say, of course, I would need Ms. Hank's approval. But I would say a lot of things we'll be able to approve. So we're kind of looking for a broad spectrum of things to, to provide for these families.
Are there like stipulations with the stuff that people can, can donate or whatever? Just whatever, you know, if you have, okay. I, I mean, that, that probably is something that we could work on getting the word out in, just in the community as well. I mean, I think, I think everybody's, you know, from my family, I mean, my, as it turns out, my kids grow out of clothes all the time and the, the knee jerk thing is, you know, maybe to donate them down at Goodwill or something like that. But I'd, I'd, you know, it sounds like maybe there's, you know, uh, some other kind of need or, and, and other things. You know, I thought about coats. I mean, in the wintertime, you, you talked about like shoes and backpacks and stuff, but man, our, our kids need, our kids need coats and, and things like that. I mean, there's, there's a great need for that. Okay, so that's, that's important. And then I agree with Ms. Benali and I'm, I'm sure the rest of our board, you know, will be able to talk about it more, but the need to see if maybe we can lobby for, lobby for more money. And this is Representative Vento? Is that's who this is, this McKinney, that's who this is named for? McKinney Vento or whatever, is that who that is?
Yes. And then, and then just so you guys know too, for our, at the state level, our dish, our contact is Dana Malone. Just so you all are aware. And that's who we reach out to contact with for any of the funding or anything that we have issues with. That's who we reach out to.
Sure. No, we can definitely, you know, put our shoulder behind this and see if we can, you know, work some stuff through our lobbyists and things like that, see if we can get the ball rolling. It sounds like there's just like a, a major need.
And I really appreciate the way you started your conversation also, your report, about doing more social media outreach. And, and I think that's one thing that was very beneficial to help because a lot of people are on those social medias too, that we can help spread the word or they can look at and read about, you know, in, in that form, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
All right, that was, uh, some good reports and stuff. Is there anything else you wanna talk about, Mr. Hyatt?
There's, I just wanna mention one thing. When we went to Kansas with the, the whole school district for the career readiness program, one of the things that was very interesting that they had at the school was a little room. I mean, it's just like, like the size of Mike's office. And they had all these shelves and they had a clothes rack. And the kids, what they did was they donated the, into that little, it was somebody's closet. And I don't know what was the name of the person that started it. But whenever the kids needed something, they went into that closet and found what they needed. And there was no- nothing that they needed to pay. They just had to go in there on their own time. So, you know, maybe implementing something like that within our schools would be something helpful instead of, we don't know where it goes to the whole Goodwill, you know, but maybe having a, starting off, if we could ask our counselors or something, if they could start a closet in their, in their, in their facility. And the other thing I wanted to mention, because we did talk about this during the through high school construction meeting, design meeting, was, um, having showers and washing machine and dryers for our students that may need it. And this was, the, our children in this program was also mentioned at that time because they do need the privacy. And that was one thing that, what bothered me a lot with the real high school was that, you know, it's the old style where everybody just stands around this one place to shower. But, you know, just having the privacy and giving them the opportunity to take a shower at our school district has also been very beneficial to them. So thank you.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, I'll, uh, direct your attention to the notices of communication. So you can put those on your, uh, on your calendars over the next two months, or at least for September, our board meetings and holidays. So let's get down here to new business. The first item here is legislative topics for resolutions to be submitted to the New Mexico School Board Association twenty twenty-five platform. Was there anything specific to present for this, Mr. Hyatt?
Uh, Mr. Mortensen, as you know, the school board, or the School Association of New Mexico asks for items from all board members across the state, so you've been receiving emails on that. And so the thought behind this was, last year we did a, we did a resolution having to do with local control and it, it made it on to the legislative platform. Obviously, this is a new year and so this discussion item was just to brainstorm other ideas and then at the end to vote on what specific resolutions you guys would want. And we will draft them and submit them for you to meet the need that you desire. So I have some suggestions that I wrote down and then you guys are welcome to come up with whatever you want. And then at the end, in the action part, people can make motions for what they think should be submitted. I don't know, I couldn't say if it's good to submit a bunch or if it's good to submit a few. I'm not quite sure how that process works with the School Board Association. But I think what they do is they take legislative resolutions and see what they have the most of on a specific topic. Mr. Mitchell could probably tell us. And then, and then how they select what items actually make it on there. I'm not, I'm not quite sure on the process.
Well, let's, uh, let's start it out. We'll, we'll, we'll let you start us out, Mr. Hyatt, and then we can kind of go down the list if anybody has some ideas and we'll throw some, some ideas out for brainstorming. Who's, who's taking notes? You have pretty handwriting, I hope.
Yeah, well, uh, so obviously we just got done talking about McKinney Vento. We could come up with some, some language and the dollar amount that might be more sufficient from the state of New Mexico, along with those federal funds to fully meet the needs of our homeless or students that are in need in our community, in our schools. I think that one would be fairly simple and straightforward to do. It's, it's just, it's just added money to meet that need. My second one was, a lot of these have to do specifically with the Yasi Martinez lawsuit that has not been remedied and in some cases going backwards. As a plaintiff in that, in that, that specific lawsuit, one thing that happened last year was they eliminated the rural factor out of the transportation funding formula, which steered, I think, forty percent of the new dollars towards Rio Rancho. And so there is a inequity, in my opinion, in New Mexico and how the money is being distributed. They no longer value the rural nature of New Mexico and are, have shoved a bunch of money towards the city centers, which I think goes against not only the Yasi Marti- Yasi Martinez lawsuit, but common sense that buses in rural areas not only put on more miles, but there's more rough roads in the rural areas than in Rio Rancho. Although I've heard Rio Rancho talk as if their roads are rough. And I'd like to invite them out here and we can, we can take them on some rough roads in, say, a Pueblo Pantado area. And so maybe one suggestion is maybe legislation about, I guess, adjusting that formula to allow again for a rural factor. Because again, it, it goes against the Yasi Martinez lawsuit to go the opposite direction, which they did as legislators. And so move back towards something that distributes the money more fairly in New Mexico. The other one was, or other few are Navao language and culture teachers. They increased the pay for those teachers, which is a good thing, but they never funded it completely and repeatedly throughout the years. It was a one-time thing. And so now we're always constantly fighting and saying, hey, you haven't funded this. It should really be part of the, a formula. I know the state, the LESC, is looking at a new funding formula for New Mexico. And maybe this is a way for us to, to lobby, to get actual, those teachers in a formula that we can actually fund those positions, because it's pretty expensive, given that we have almost forty teachers, that's millions of dollars. The other one is the Indian Education Act to fund that appropriately. And it kind of goes in hand with the Navao language and culture teachers. They don't give us no money. The, the Indian Education Act in Mexico is not funded appropriately. A heavy amount of the dollars go towards certain tribes in the state and not all tribes. Navao Nation, Navao Dene students being the largest population get the least amount of dollars on average throughout the years. Zuni, because they're a large pueblo, it also affects them. And then all the smaller pueblos on average get more dollars. And that's a, we've been, we've been kind of barking about this and talking about it. But it really needs to be legislation to try to move the ball forward and actually funding Indian education in New Mexico. So I think the state's failed in that area. That's part, again, part of the Yasi Martinez lawsuit. The last one was something I mentioned earlier in our discussion this morning, or this today, this afternoon, was legislation around the drug problem in New Mexico that the government has allowed to proliferate throughout our communities. We, in, even in McKinley County, it's not only just about cannabis, marijuana and the legalization of that for adults that's causing a problem, but we're seeing more and more harder drugs come into our community. I don't know if people are aware that not too many years ago, you didn't see a lot of fentanyl or, or meth or things like that, that are more, obviously very serious drugs. But I think legislation around money for prevention, not only for us as a school district, but also for communities in New Mexico for prevention and treatment. And also legislation around making sure that the distributors of marijuana and the vapes that come into our community, that they're not targeting students and children or can be masked in ways that they're undetectable. Because that is a serious problem, as I mentioned before, that we're having in our schools. Not only is it easy to get now because it's everywhere, but it's masked in a way that's hard to notice or to detect so that we can try to curb that behavior in students. So with the packaging specifically, maybe legislation around packaging. And I also think this isn't necessarily a legislative issue, but I'm sure there either has been or will be. But I would suggest to the board that we become part of, if there is one out there, or if we need to start one ourselves, a class action lawsuit, not only against the companies that are producing these, but maybe against New Mexico because of the way that they let this happen. Maybe, I guess it's to be determined, or maybe it's, uh, well-known and, and studied for adults, the effects of marijuana specifically, is, I think, most people consider it a mild drug, but it has a huge effect on students when their brains are developing. And I think our state has forgotten that. And by the legalization of marijuana, has a, has a direct effect on the learning and the, the student's ability to continue to grow in the way that they need to mentally and be able to learn and, uh, we're really concerned about that in our community.
Mr. Hyatt, are we providing also that information to, I would say, our mid-schoolers? Because I know they used to have Dare or what was it? That Red Ribbon Week or something where they would do all these presentations to show children? I mean, I can still remember them cracking an egg and telling us this is our, our brain on drugs or something. That was very scary. I don't know if, if we even do that for our children. Are we presenting them and telling them what vaping can do to your lungs and what energy drinks do to your heart and, you know, what drugs do to your brains? I mean, are we presenting that to our children too, for them to understand what the effects of that, all this stuff can do?
There are opportunities that we've taken advantage of to do that. But I think it would be beneficial, it's an area that we could definitely improve on and do more globally across our district. And I think that's something that our counseling department and social, social working, social workers department, that falls under our counseling department. And also with safety, that we could partner and do something different around letting students around letting students know about the harm. I don't think we've done that consistently in the way that we should. Um, but again, I think it also needs to come from the state, and there needs to be funding for that also, because of what they've done to our communities. Thank you for that suggestion, and, and I think we can do a better job. We have talked about it, but I think we can do a better job.
What other suggestions you have down there, anybody?
Uh, I just have one. I don't think, I don't know how we can approach it. I don't know if you want platably, but again, the, um, with the P S C O C, with the culture classroom and the sped classroom, um, do you want to, I don't know. Is that a legislative thing, or just continue to bug them about it?
Uh, President Mortensen, Ms. Benali, we're suing them over that. It's part of our lawsuit, but it doesn't mean that we couldn't also do legislation as far as making sure the adequacy, adequacy standards are actually meeting things that are adequate or needed in our community, uh, for our schools at least. Um, really, we're not really looking at adequacy, we're looking at, like, a sufficient facility. And so I'm open to that. We could list in legislation the things in our lawsuit that they should be taking care of for our facility needs.
And I, I think the only pushback we'll get, well, we might not get back, I'm not sure, but, you know, New Mexico School Board Association's always saying it has to be a statewide issue. But I, I, if we approach it with the special ed, include special ed, I think that'll be okay, because, you know, they're gonna tell us all, you know, not all of our children have culture in their classroom, or they don't have, all have culture programs, so.
I think every school in New Mexico, probably eighty percent, I bet you had, have a, a cultural need, whether it's Spanish, um, language acquisition or, or Native American. Native American, there's probably a third of the districts in the state, so it's pretty significant. Uh, we found that out when we were fighting for impact aid. Um, but there's also Spanish and other, other language needs, especially even in Albuquerque, downtown Albuquerque, there's some international areas where there's a lot of language, um, needs for, for their students that are coming from other countries.
Um, I got a, I, I've got a couple of possible ideas. I'm not sure how to express these things. I, I know that Ms. Hanks, we're always talking about, you know, how far in arrears the state is with awards and things like that through PED. Is there, i- i- is this something that could be like a legislative solution, where they're, you know, to put pressure on them to get these awards out? It may be, uh, maybe a, a money penalty, an interest penalty, or, you know, or, or any, anything. I don't know, I don't know what, uh, you know, I, I'm not sure what that might look like, but just something to try to get them to di- get this stuff, like, quicker.
I think some timeline thresholds, we could definitely do that. Whereas when, when an award has to be, um, given to a district, instead of leaving it open, an open door to it, giving a timeline. And I'm not sure, I'd have to have Javanna think a little bit more about it, because I'm not, uh, for sure about all the funds. They all come in at different times, and there may be some stipulations we'd have to spell out, because some funds may need more time versus others, uh, be distributed. But I think that's a significant part of the Yasi Martinez lawsuit also, is the lack of funding or the funding latency, um, in New Mexico. It's really bad. Uh, it's probably, maybe one of the worst things. And then, and then you have legislators in L F C meetings talk about how cash balances are large.
Yeah.
Uh, which is a, which is, um.
Laughable.
Uh, bull. It's, there's other words we could describe it, but come on, Javanna, if you want to talk about that for a minute. But it's, it's, it's gotten to the point where it's pretty disturbing, um, when legislators talk about cash balances. We've informed them quite a bit about the need for those to cover for federal funds and lack of distribution of funds by the state in Mexico. It's almost like it's just a strategy to try to get more money back in their pockets to distribute how they want, rather than, um, really truly wanting to understand or acknowledging the problem.
President Mortensen, members of the board, Superintendent Hyatt, along with the cash balance, maybe it might be something that we recommend that they start actually recognizing a cruel basis accounting, um, because the state still attempts to pretend that we are on a cash basis. And so therefore, when they present those cash balances, they out, leave out things like obligations related to purchase orders, um, R F Rs that are pending, various things. Um, when I look at the cash balance they continue to present versus the liabilities that we have outstanding, it is millions of dollars different. And so it is a false narrative that continues to be pushed. And so maybe some language or, or legislation around how those are able to be presented to prevent false narratives.
Well, the, I mean, the bookkeeping for this, when they're like, what, like, twelve, eighteen, twenty-four months behind, is just a nightmare, and these cash balances you're talking about and stuff. Um, kind of on that same subject, i- is, is there anything in there that has to do with any of our awards or, or, or the calculations they use? The, the, um, you know, like, the unit values and stuff that, that are tied with, like, an inflation index? We talk a lot about, like, you know, we talk a lot about these construction costs, and, you know, they, they say, oh yeah, you can build a school, you know, we're gonna give you X amount of money, and then they drag their feet, and it takes, like, three years. And, and at that point, we could, like, you know, barely afford to build, like, half of a school, or something like that. I mean, is there, is there anything that, that, with any of these awards or anything that we have that, that could be tied to some sort of an inflation index, where, where it can continue to match? I mean, where, where we're somewhat on a, on a fixed income, it makes it pretty painful, all that pain is on us when there's price increases.
And President Mortensen, members of the board, one of the things the board may consider as it can discuss, changes to adequacy standards and things related to public school capital outlay. Um, that is a legislative committee. And so maybe the legislators need to look at changing the function and the organization of that committee in order to make it more productive. Maybe that's something the board might consider as kind of a global approach to both modifications and, um, changes to the adequacy standards. Cause I know, uh, Superintendent Hyatt mentioned, um, the heritage language classroom, special education. Um, but they haven't even began modernization on things like college and career readiness. Those aren't even part of the adequacy standards at all.
Yeah.
We've been working on teachage standards and the adequacy standards since we were in court in twenty eighteen.
I'd really like to, once, once we have some of this stuff and, and, you know, the, from this brainstorming we have here, I'd really, I, uh, you know, I mean, one of the action items on, we have here is approval of topics to be drafted. But I think it might make sense, you know, and I'll wait to hear what the board wants to do. It might make sense to push that, uh, a board meeting or to maybe just one down in the future, so that we can kind of see some of these things boil down a little bit more and, and, and really see. I mean, we've thrown out some ideas here that I think are some good ideas, but it, it, I, I don't know if we necessarily have anything to vote on right now.
Yeah.
Um, and just to add some suggestions, um, out there during this, our brainstorming session, but, um, I would really like, once this is more formulated and we start having some hard copies, um, I would really like to ask our legislators to invite them to express each resolution to them, or each legislation to them, and how we need their support when it gets into their offices. And I think we, you know, we haven't done that in a while, even our lobbyists. If we can bring them all together again and talk about this need would be really beneficial to help us. Because I think they're all getting those different stories, you know? They hear different things, and, um, I think what really helped was us being all on the same page at once. Um, I think that was very beneficial at that time.
All right. So are there, are there any other items that we want to add to our little brainstorming here?
Uh, but, Mr. Mortensen, I agree with you. I don't think right now we have, we really don't have anything to vote on at this time. Um, so I will take your suggestion and maybe table this, um, to a future upcoming meeting?
Yeah, maybe our next meeting. What, go ahead, Mr. Hyatt, Mr. Hyatt.
Our next meeting is?
September third.
Okay, and I think the due date, what's the due date? I think it's September eighth, is that for the legislative?
Yeah, let me see.
Does that leave us enough time?
What I'm saying is that, do you want us to do, do you want us to do resolutions on all of those items? And then bring them to that meeting, or how would you like us to proceed?
I thi- I think that would be good.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And you guys can choose all of them or some of them, or we can adjust them.
All for twenty twenty-five legislative resolution is, and open and ends Monday, September ninth.
Yeah.
Okay, the ninth.
So we choose, I think it'd be best to choose all of them and hopefully get one or two through. And rather than trying to put one in and then that gets put, thrown aside. If we have multiple ones, and, you know, we might get one or two that will actually make it in and go forward.
My point, my point was, is, I mean, we've, all we've done at this point is just to brainstorm some stuff. And so I think it might make sense to boil those down and, and look at them at our next board meeting, and then actually make, like, vote on each one or, or whatever.
I, we're, I think we're talking about timeframe too. We are, if our meeting's on the third, and we have to have everything ready to by the ninth, that's.
Does that leave enough time?
Well, we don't have, we don't have any other choice. We'll, we'll figure, we'll, we'll get it done. We'll get the resolutions done, and we can, we can share those, and then, um, at that meeting, we can finalize.
Okay, so what's the action item here?
I think it's a table.
To table?
Yeah, that was my.
Can you make a motion, please?
Yes. I would like to make a motion to table under new business six A legislative topic for a resolution to be submitted, uh, for the New Mexico School Board Association twenty twenty-five.
I think you mean six B, I apologize. Excuse me for interrupting you.
Six B, the top.
B is the action, A is the discussion.
Yeah, yeah, okay. I'm sorry, um, I would like to motion to table six, um, B, approval of topics to be drafted for a resolution for the New Mexico School Boards that, Association Legislative Platform.
When do you want to table it until?
Um, September sixth.
Okay.
September third.
September third.
September third. Okay, so the action item is to table item six B until our September third meeting, is that correct? Okay, is there a second down there? Second by Mr. Schaaf. Roll call, please.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Yes.
Ms. Benali?
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Mortensen?
Yes. All right, our last item is, uh, an, a, a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
By Mr. Schaaf, who's second. Mr. Long, did you have that?
Yes.
All right, roll call, please.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Benali?
Yes.
Mr. Schaaf?
Yes.
Mr. Long?
Yes.
Mr. Morton?